To order at six o'clock, would everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God.
Thank you. Can I get a roll call, please?
Thank you, Mayor. Let the record reflect that all council members are present.
Thank you. Any conflicts of interest? Hearing none. Any changes or deletions to the agenda?
No changes or additions or deletions, Mayor.
Thank you. Public comments. Anyone wishing to speak to the City Council on any item not listed on the agenda may do so at this time. Members of the public have the right to speak on any item on the council agenda at the time the item comes up for consideration. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the City Council is not allowed to consider issues or take action on any item not listed on the agenda. Three minutes are typically allotted to each speaker. Do I have anyone in my audience that would like to make any public comments at this time? Step up.
Good evening. I'm Rob Kozlowski. Live here in Cloverdale. First of all, thank you for your time this evening. On the subject that we talked about two weeks ago on assuming $8 million in debt financing for a potpourri of projects funded by water and sewer revenues, I was actually told by a city employee that I don't believe consultants' theoretical savings numbers. But it's not about belief, it's more about witnessing major changes in policy direction by city staff and the city council. They are: One, changing direction from pay-as-you-go funding to debt financing for basic city services. Two, changing priorities by starting a smart meter project originally slated for sometime around 2026 instead of starting work on critical water infrastructure projects now and in 2023 for which maximum rate increases have been assessed for two years and for which three more years of maximum rate hikes are in store for residents. Three, changing course and abandoning fiscal responsibility by assuming $4.2 million in debt plus interest over the next 15 years for 3,500 water meters without a firm request for proposal or identifying where the extra $1.8 million in supporting infrastructure is coming from. And what I mean by that as an aside is the extra $1.000,000 includes $750,000 for radio read equipment, $577,000 for SCADA system, and an estimated $500,000 for GIS mapping and GPS tracking. Four, changing the focus on water and sewer services by using those very revenues plus the added drought surcharge to also pay for a massive solar system built at the water treatment plant. This added project was never part of the approved 2021 capital improvement list that residents were told about back when we protested the increases. Five, not changing the status quo in Cloverdale, which means delaying both mandated and necessary capital improvement plans. Ninety-two percent of the current and planned water and sewer revenues are backstopping the overall debt financing of the $8 million. The biggest change, which is also the biggest shock for residents, is that each one of you is taking into debt the city and putting that debt onto the backs of residents. Why? Because of some partial funding applied to a non-critical water meter project. Supporting a multi-year, multimillion-dollar debt finance set of projects appears to be another symptom of what occurred two years ago, once again kicking the can down the road and delaying work on critical infrastructure products. For the record, my old water meter is four years old and it works fine. And for concerned residents, it's about having no rate, it's not about having no rate increases, it's about reasonable rate increases with accountability and communication, both of which have been sorely lacking for the past two years. In closing, I ask for this change. City Council, please change your approval of debt financing from today. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else in the audience? Seeing none. Do we have any hands on the Zoom?
Thank you, Mayor. No one's raising their hands at this time.
Thank you. All right, move into C Communications. Anything?
No communications, Mayor.
All right, D Proclamations and Presentations. The first one we have is for Native American Heritage Month. Is there anyone who would like to read this?
It is. So I am very pleased to read this, a proclamation of the City Council, the City of Cloverdale declaring November 2022 Native American Heritage Month in Cloverdale. Whereas Native American Heritage Month is a time to celebrate the many achievements and contributions made by Native Americans to our economic, cultural, spiritual, and political development. And whereas the first American Indian Day is in a state was declared on the second Saturday in May 1916 by the governor of New York. And whereas what started at the turn of the century as an effort to gain a day of recognition for the significant contributions the first Americans made to the establishment and growth of the US has resulted in a whole month being designated for that purpose. And whereas in 1990 President George H.W. Bush approved a joint resolution designating November National American Indian Heritage Month. And whereas Congress chose November to celebrate Native American Heritage Month for its cultural significance as the month when Native Americans conclude their traditional harvest season. And whereas November 28, 2008, Native American Heritage Day is first celebrated as a national holiday proclaimed by US President George W. Bush, and the following year, US President Barack Obama signed the Native American Heritage Day Act of 2009 into law, declaring that the holiday would take place every year on the day after Thanksgiving. And whereas in 2021, President Joe Biden proclaimed the observance to function as a reminder of the historic and current inequality facing Native Americans, as well as to honor Native American veterans and service members. And whereas, as of 2021, there are 574 federally recognized tribes in the US, and while many Native Americans reside on reservations, about 71% do not. And whereas the Cloverdale Rancho Pomo Indians includes nearly 500 members who are descendants of the indigenous people from the Cloverdale area and lived upon these lands for many centuries. And whereas the City of Cloverdale is proud to honor the history and contributions of indigenous Americans in our community throughout our state and nation. Whereas November is an opportunity to grow our understanding of native culture, traditions, and how historical traumas have impacted native peoples throughout history. And now therefore be it proclaimed that the City Council of the City of Cloverdale does hereby declare November 2022 as Native American Heritage Month in Cloverdale and encourages all citizens to learn about and celebrate together the rich traditions, languages, and many contributions of Native Americans, dated this date, November 11, 2022.
Thank you, Councilmember Bagby. Tonight, to accept this proclamation, I have Trina Vega. Trina is a Native American healer. She's a mother to four. She's a proud grandmother of 18, and a recent great-grandmother to a six-month-old named Yellowbird. Congratulations on that. That's incredible. She moved here in 1961 with her grandmother and grandfather. She was born on the Hofflin Reservation, is Pomo descent. She was raised with Patty Santana. Her siblings were raised on Santana Lane. She was raised by her grandmother on Church Lane. The Chair of the Cloverdale, Patricia Hermosillo, is a respected friend and is also in the audience. Thank you. And Patty Santana, thank you for being here as well. She spent 18 years as a court advocate for both Hofflin and Cloverdale, and placed her heart and soul into all the kids while doing this. She practiced alternative medicine her entire adult life, and has been teaching classes for almost 40 years. She practices a diverse menu of healings with her native spirit at heart. She's taught children's feather meditation in the park here in Cloverdale as well, also a children's crystal class for years. She says there's too much to list. I think that I would believe that, knowing her family. She says she's a proud, humble native Pomo elder, has a good sense of her Pomo culture at heart. I can't thank you enough for being here with everyone that came to represent. Go around the room. We have Trina, Patricia, we have Patty Santana, we have Max Cordova, and a few others that I don't know, and I apologize for not knowing who you are. My gosh. So I thank you for being here to accept this from us. I want to give everyone a chance to say something. I don't want to have you come up if you guys don't want to say a little something, if you'd like to. Okay?
Absolutely.
Trina, thank you so much for doing this. And I hope that you'll continue to work with the city as we dedicate lands and open space. We can call on you to dedicate those sacred places. So I'm just so happy to be part of this tonight and to recognize you and your families and your community's importance in our larger community. So this is, it's a step forward. So much love to you.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. I just want to also thank you for being here and for everything that you've done in the community, and it's so well deserved. And thank you for being here with your family. And it's just a wonderful evening. It's a pleasure to be able to be part of presenting this to you.
Trina, I guess you're on the other side of the screen there, but I just kind of wanted to diddle what Councilmember Bagby and Paula said. It's a great thing that we're able to do this, and appreciate you being in our community. Thank you.
Councilmember Cruz? Trina, would you like to say anything? Please, come up. I love it. Really appreciate it.
I just want to thank each and every one of you, and it's just beautiful to see that the Native community stays strong and stays linked together with all the leaders, and that's always appreciated. And I would encourage maybe inviting Patricia Hermosillo to even speak with council anytime you have any questions. Here she is the Chair here and a very honored friend of mine. And I just, in my heart right now, I have my grandmother, Marion Rose Wilder, that worked in an Italian Swiss colony with my grandfather until he passed, and then she passed in 2001. Very much a part of this community. She taught me all my values in humbleness and how important family is. And family is this community, and I just see it getting stronger and stronger again. I just want to give gratitude and a blessing to each and every one of you for those that gave their beautiful words and blessed the one that decided not to. I appreciate you all. Thank you.
Trina, if it's okay with you, I'd ask that we could take a picture with you, your family, anybody else that wants to be part of this that came to represent. I would love it. If that's okay.
Mayor, while we transition to take a photograph, I just want to acknowledge that the proclamation is a call to action to learn more about our indigenous Cloverdale Rancho Pomo and both the Cloverdale Historical Society as well as the Cloverdale Library have information for the community to learn more about our local Pomo population. The Cloverdale Historical Society has a collection of over 100 Pomo baskets on display in the second floor of their exhibit, and I encourage residents, if they have the opportunity, to visit our Historical Society and learn more about the Pomo culture and in particular, the wonderful artwork that they've generated with their Pomo baskets.
All right, now, D2, proclamation for Commissioner Shanahan's service recognition. Is there anyone here that would like to read it?
I got to serve it, Mike, for seven years already. A proclamation of the City Council, the City of Cloverdale, presented to Mike Shanahan for service to the community of Cloverdale on the Cloverdale Planning Commission. Whereas Mike Shanahan was originally appointed to the Planning Commission in 2007, where he served for 15 years after he was appointed by the City Council. Whereas during his term on the Planning Commission, Mike participated in the city's general plan update, the creation of its station area downtown plan, and the creation of the Alexander Valley Resort specific plan, and the drafting of a major overhaul of the city's outdated zoning code. I remember that. Do you remember that? Yeah. Remember those finders? Yeah. Anyway, sorry. And the tree preservation. Oh, that took a while. Sorry. I was probably the wrong person to read this. We worked on that for a long time. The tree preservation ordinance and the urban growth boundary community input process, which I will not comment on. Whereas, that's an inside joke. Sorry. Whereas during his tenure as a planning commissioner, Mike Shanahan reviewed many development projects, including Vine Ridge Senior Living and Vista Oaks, and more recently the Baumgartner Ranch and Alexander Valley Apartments, served on the Commercial and Residential Design Guidelines Subcommittee for the 2009 General Plan Update. Whereas Mike Shanahan is a local business owner providing vital planning services for the citizens of Cloverdale, being the first certified green business in Cloverdale, and has served on the CCOC at Wallace House as a board member for many years. Now therefore be it resolved, the City Council of the City of Cloverdale does hereby proclaim its appreciation, its deep appreciation to Mike Shanahan for his numerous contributions to the City of Cloverdale as a member of the City Planning Commission, and for his role as a member of many different organizations serving the residents of Sonoma County and the City of Cloverdale. Be it further resolved that I, Todd Landes, Mayor of the City of Cloverdale, along with my fellow council members, do hereby acknowledge the dedication and significant contributions by Mike Shanahan on behalf of the cities of Cloverdale, November 9, 2022. And I will just mention the sacrifices of your wife, giving you up for all of those night meetings. We want to thank her as well. So congratulations, Mike.
Heard it's 15 years. I was blown away. No one can survive this life for 15 years. And so we are so appreciative and thank you so much for all you have done for us, City of Cloverdale.
You didn't even get time off for good behavior. So congratulations, Mike. We appreciate you.
Mike, I just wanted to say thank you for your service of 15 years. I know Debbie's going to be excited to have you home on that, on those evenings. But thank you. Lot of hard work. Appreciate having the opportunity to work with you, and good luck in your retirement.
Thank you, Mike. I just wanted to diddle what everybody said. Thank you so much for all your contributions. I know we work together in different capacities, but we work together on the same projects over the years. And it's been a lot of work, and you were right there, knee-deep in it, and we appreciate that. So enjoy your well-deserved time off, and we'll see you in town. Thank you. Thank you.
Councilmember Cruz?
Thanks to you and your leadership, Mike, for leading so very many different planning commissioners. And we hope that all of your advice continues to serve well. Cloverdale.
Make any comments or say anything? We'd love it.
Just like to say, Mike, thanks for being the Chair through some pretty hairy meetings that we've had in the recent past, and your work on the Right to Industry Ordinance and the Downtown Plan Updates that we recently did. And I just really enjoyed your leadership through the, as a Chair of the Planning Commission.
Yeah, I just moved to California many years ago, and after serving on City Council in New Jersey in the big city, my wife gave me the opportunity to say, you're not going on City Council, but you could do something else. So that's when I applied to get on the Planning Commission, and you guys were great, and put me on, and it's been a wonderful ride. It was two years of sitting there before you placed me. That was fun. Yeah, so it was, it was good. It was, it was nice to be able to, over the years, get these kids coming in as often as, watch them grow into commissioners, some of them go on to City Council. It's just been fun. And watching this town grow, and helping, hopefully, doing my job correctly, that we have a good town in the next 20 years of what we're looking at as planning commissioners, that it's gonna happen, and we don't overwhelm ourselves too quickly, which is what we were always trying to do, and always trying to keep that quality of life for Cloverdale citizens up here, because we want that to be the big thing. And we want those kids to have play spaces, and we want people to have room to roam. And, you know, it's all part of being a thinking and sharing. So just thanks for letting me serve.
Serve, Mike. Okay, moving on. D3, the Student Liaison Report.
Good evening, everyone. And today for my report, I have that Cloverdale Eagles won against Lower Lake on October 28th, score being 42 to 0. Seniors played their last home game on the fourth against Clear Lake and unfortunately lost 21 to 22. Cloverdale Eagles make it to playoffs, and their first playoff game is this Friday at Clear Lake. Go support your Cloverdale Eagles. Fall sports banquet is tonight at 6:30, and basketball practices have begun, and season, I believe, is starting next week. Our counselor, Ms. Ulrich, has returned to campus after her maternity leave. Grading period ended last week, and grades were finalized today. Seniors have a field trip to Santa Rosa Junior College tomorrow in the morning, and juniors have already started their fundraisers to raise money for prom. And I conclude my report.
Thank you very much. Consent Calendar. All items under the Consent Calendar will be considered together by one action of the City Council unless any council member or member of the public requests that an item be removed and considered separately. Are there any items?
I'll remove the Consent Calendar.
I'll second that.
For public comment.
Should we have public comment on any item on the consent or not require it to be pulled? I can't remember.
Let me either press the button first. Items on the consent don't require any comments from the public. Unless an item is pulled for discussion, no public comment is necessary.
We just did it out of habit, but yeah, that's cool.
Councilmember Bagby?
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz? She gave a thumbs up. She's on mute.
Yes, I can find the button on time. Sorry.
No worries. Councilmember Paula?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Renter?
Aye.
And Mayor Lands?
Aye.
All right, moving on. Public hearings. F1, adoption of the 2022 California Building Standards Codes and the 2022 Fire Code by reference and amending Title 15 Buildings and Construction of the Cloverdale Municipal Code.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, as you mentioned, this item is the introduction to the adoption of the 2022 Building Code. With us tonight is Dwayne Starz, our building official. Dwayne did really, pretty much did all the work on this, and he's the expert. So we're gonna have to, we're gonna ask him to come up and give us a little bit of an overview and a chance in a minute. So each city is required, it's mandatory, to adopt the Building Code. If you don't choose to make any local amendments, then it automatically goes into effect on January 1st. Most jurisdictions do choose to make a few local amendments, which we can discuss. There's really nothing really startling in here. There's, in past years, we've had things like requiring solar and the tiny houses, like more, you know, big, more exciting things like that were occurring. But this year is kind of, there's not a lot of that happening. Dwayne, I don't know if you want to come up and just give us a little overview, like we talked about.
Mayor Lands and members of council, Dwayne Starz with Coastal and DCCM Civil Engineering. The code adoption process that you have The code adoption process that you have before you is something that every city and county, state of California is going through at this time. It's a triennial process, which means that it occurs every three years. So how that kind of comes about is the International Code Council in January published the 2021 International Codes, which is basically your plumbing, mechanical, electrical. That is published, the state of California then takes that document and they have six months in which to make their state amendments to that. So they distribute that to HCD, State Fire Marshal and Energy Commission, et cetera. And then that document is published in July. And it is published as the 2022 California Model Codes. There's twelve parts of those codes, which comprises of, you know, Title 24, twelve parts of that. The code adoption process that you're going through now, as was mentioned by Kevin, is really a perfunctory process that every city council and board supervisors goes through. The adoption of the codes is something that, as mentioned, will happen automatically in January 1. But between when the state published the codes in July and January of 2023 is your opportunity to make any local amendments to that code. And then you're required to make, all amendments are to be more restrictive, not less restrictive, if you make any. Also mentioned, there really wasn't a whole lot of, there was nothing that changed in the codes that, or in the local amendments that I reviewed. Everything was just basically changing dates and kind of updating everything in the code. So there's really nothing of any consequence. This has happened in previous years. So with that, if there's any questions, I'll certainly try to field those.
Sir, appreciate that. Any questions or comments?
Thank you, Mr. Ray, just a couple of quick comments. One, does it include or could we include the requirement for new construction to include a heat circulating, hot water circulating pump where the water circulates through the house? Where people would not be, where you have to turn on the, you know, if you live upstairs and the water heater's downstairs and they turn, the water has to circulate. A lot of water goes down the drain until it gets warm and hot where with the hot water circulating pump, it would keep the water circulating, you turn it on, you'd have hot water right away. That would be one comment. And the second one is your thoughts on exterior sprinkler systems for fire to protect residents with being in a high fire area in Sonoma County. Having, we have interior sprinkler systems, but exterior. So if something was to get on the roof, it would trigger it and, and, you know, go on. So those are the two comments I have.
With respect to exterior fire sprinkler systems, the way that fires progress in a wildland fire is typically some embers that are blown and they would eventually either land on the roof or in the gutter where a lot of debris collects, or they get sucked into the roof vents. And so that, it causes a fire within the house. The only, the only thing that I can think of that an exterior fire sprinkler system would help is, there has been some issues with a lot of the solar battery backups that have time to time caught fire. And so a sprinkler in that event may be helpful. I don't know that it would be helpful in the event of a wildland fire.
And the water pump for the hot water?
Were you looking to add that as a?
Well, I was just asking if that's something that could be added if we chose to as a council? Because, you know, with the water situation as it is today, a lot of water, when you turn on the water and you let it run for maybe thirty seconds to a minute, that's a lot of water where if you, if it was already warm, it wouldn't be going down the drain, so.
So if you're looking to add that, that's something you certainly could do. But remember, when you add a requirement like that, it's basically would be for new construction.
That's what I was referring to, it's new construction.
Right, and then that would have to apply to everyone across the board. You might have to take a look at how you want that applied, but it certainly could be an amendment, a local amendment to, to the Plumbing Code.
Thank you.
A question, actually, in, Councilmember Paula's kind of jogged my curiosity about, and I, I think that, you know, we, we all have concern about wildfire in this area. And, you know, if there's a fire in a wildland, you could have the best kept suburban home and if you don't have gutter guards, you're exposed to ember cast. And that's how so many homes were, were lost in Santa Rosa during the Tubbs Fire. It wasn't even the fire spreading up to the property, it was the ember cast from, you know, even miles away. So I just wonder if some of, where you see some of the recommendations from CalFire and some of the, the home hardening efforts, how you're seeing that influence are these building codes?
Well, fire codes are typically looked at and reviewed and adopted and amended by the State Fire Marshal. So the building side doesn't have a lot of control over that. But there has been, since we've had quite a few fires lately, a pretty big push to vegetation management and clearing out, you know, dead grass, high weeds, dead trees. I've noticed that quite a bit that's happening with both local fire departments and with CalFire. So that's kind of a big, a big thing that I see happening right now.
So, one, kind of piggybacking on, on Councilmember Paula and Bagby, pertaining to generators on commercial properties, making that a requirement. Is that possible for us to do? I mean, I'll give you an example, you know, I guess it was a couple of years ago, we were without power for quite a while. And some of the stores, for example, the grocery outlet lost a considerable amount of frozen food and as did a couple of the other establishments. So I'm just wondering on commercial properties, could we require the generator to keep the business functioning during downtime? Especially grocery stores?
I would probably move to, along with the research system, is more of a policy that the city could adopt as opposed to trying to add them into the code at this time. Certainly could be done, but it may end up slowing the process down. And the important thing would be to try to get this adopted so that the ordinance takes effect by January 1. You could certainly take that into account as far as a policy that the city is adopting and that might be the way to go, the easy way to go. The reason I say that is because if you're requiring a generator for non-residential use, it may be a hardship for some new businesses coming on board. It could be a strip mall where it's a rubber stamp shop, or, you know, there's a lot of it. So you have to kind of look at unintended consequences of requiring a one size fit all for, for all non-residential. And that would be something to take a hard look at and see how you wanted to implement that and probably through policy at this, at this time.
And I wasn't thinking along the lines of every little mom and pop. I was thinking more of grocery outlet, grading supermarket, CBS, the essential type businesses to function in the community.
Yes, as a matter of fact, you know, we were evacuated in twenty, it was twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen. And basically all power was gone from, you know, from Santa Rosa, Sonoma County and Marin County. And I ended up staying in a motel. And the only place that had power was a Safeway because they had a backup generator. So in instances like that, you don't have gasoline, the gas pumps aren't on electricity. So those kinds of essential services, grocery stores, gasoline stations, may be something to consider.
Thank you. Councilmember Cruz, do you have anything?
Any head shake?
Well, you know, I agree with the presenter on what it is that the council would like to, to modify. Because we have to think long term, not just for who we have or what we have at this point. And, and then again, if it's gonna be commercial, it has to apply to all little restaurants and shops as well as the big grocery stores. So it is something to have in mind. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor?
Sorry.
Quick comment about the ordinance itself.
Age before beauty, but that's the wrong word, sorry. Use before beauty.
So the, the, quick comment on the ordinance itself. The ordinance itself, you may have noticed, does include the Fire Code Amendment. And it still has the current fireworks language that's in your municipal code now that allows for safe and sane fireworks. That hasn't changed, no election has been certified. We do know, we're looking at the polls regarding where Measure K is, but that's not final yet. So the, if, if that goes through, if it, if it does, if it is passed by the voters, the, the ordinance that the voters pass does state that that section is deleted in its entirety. So that ordinance deletes that section in its entirety and includes a whole new chapter to your municipal code. So I just wanted to make that comment in case you saw it and I'm sure you did, but since the, the election's not final, that's why it's still in there.
Actually, Mr. Mayor, so just to, you know, in the interest of spouting, you know, phrases we all hear too much, we were on the same wavelength. I think that in light of the likely passage of Mr. Care, I'd like to, for the council's direct staff to bring proposed language and modifications to the December meeting for review. This is the, the first reading of the ordinance, assuming. And it should include language that would establish administrative procedures in line with our other special event applications as far as events are concerned.
And we could definitely work on that. The, the current ordinance that's being adopted by the, by, if, if adopted by the voters, there's an ordinance that, that is being proposed. That ordinance itself provides some structure to, provides definitions. There's a whole chapter, nine point four oh four, that would be adopted, which is fireworks, which has the definitions, the, the prohibition, exceptions, fireworks displays. And we could look at the administrative procedures needed as well to provide guidance as soon as we know whether that measure passes or not. So that's a good idea, that way it provides the, what the structure is. And regarding the, the changes to this ordinance, the, the measure, the ordinance proposed there actually has a section which states that, that this, Section fifteen, fourteen, six, nine, five, which is being proposed at the first reading, would be deleted in its entirety. With ordinance, it's a little, it's a little different where we can't modify the ordinance between readings. Whatever you do in your first reading, that's what you adopt in your second reading. My point is, even if it's adopted, the ordinance, if adopted by the voters, ends up kind of deleting. So there's a couple of things going on at the same time. We'll figure it out, we'll put together the, the flow chart of what comes first, but we'll make sure the council has that information.
Yes, sir. Got a motion? It's a public hearing. Scheduled for, do we have to set the date on that or is it okay? Jose, wait. Scheduled a public hearing for December fourteenth. Hey, moving on, the new business G.
We're setting the public hearing, however, we are adopting the first reading. So we're doing the, we're still doing the, and, and I have, so again, the Building Code adoption is different than your normal ordinances where you have your public hearing at the beginning. And in this case, we're doing two public hearings, but the public hearing requirement comes at the adoption. Usually your adoption, your second reading is on the Consent Calendar. This will look a little different because it'll be on the, on the, on the agenda itself on the, for, for a public hearing. But this does require actual waiving of the first reading and by title only, and introducing by title only. And it's a very long title, so.
So we don't have public comment?
Yes, we, so we do, we, I was hoping for public comment, okay.
Anyone have public comments on this item? I see none on our attendees and none in the audience.
Correct, thank you.
Well, Mr. Mayor, I'm happy to take the bullet and read this darn thing and make a motion.
Thank you.
That's my motion, okay. Here we go, everybody, hold on. If anyone at home wants to go get a glass of wine, this is a good time to do it. So this is an ordinance of the City of Cloverdale repealing and replacing Cloverdale Municipal Code Chapters fifteen through fifteen dot eighteen and adopting by reference the 2022 California Building Standards Code Title twenty-four, the 2022 California Administrative Code Part One, including tables, the 2022 California Building Code Part Two, including tables and appendices C, I, J, O, and P, the 2022 California Residential Building Code Part two point five, including tables and appendices A, H, A, Q, A, S, A, X, and A, Z, the 2022 California Electrical Code Part Three, including tables and appendices A, B, C, F, and G, the 2022 California Mechanical Code Part Four, including tables and appendices B, C, and F, the 2022 California Plumbing Code Part Five, including tables and appendices A, B, C, D, G, I, J, and K, the 2022 California Energy Code Part Six, including tables and appendices one A, that was a ribbing one, the 2022 California Historical Building Code Part Eight, including tables and appendix A, the 2022 California Fire Code Part Nine with appendices standard and NFPA standards by reference, the 2022 California Existing Building Code Part Ten, including tables and appendix A, Chapters A one through A five, the 2022 California Green Building Standards Code Part Eleven, including tables and appendices A four and A five, the 2022 California Reference Standards Code Part Twelve of Title twenty-four, including tables and the 2021 International Property Maintenance Code.
I'll second that. Are you doing commercials for Camp Lejeune after this?
I probably will be. Were you at Camp Lejeune from nineteen eighty-three to two thousand and twenty-three? Sorry, sorry Jose.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Bagby?
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz?
Aye.
Councilmember Paula?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Walter? Mayor Landes?
Aye.
Thank you. Need a water break after that? Now, we can move on to G1, New Business Discussion of Potential Participation and Countywide Ban on Construction of New Gas Station Infrastructure.
Mayor, councilmembers, this is our continued discussion on the proposal to ban gas stations within the City of Cloverdale as is occurring in, in other parts of the county, the discussions occurring. On September twenty-sixth, or twenty-eighth, excuse me, we had a discussion where a couple of topics were brought up by the council that were concerned and we, I'm just gonna kind of go through those and see how we address them and see direction tonight. But we did see, we see five correspondents that are in your packet in favor of the ban. At, at the September meeting, one of the big concerns was the non-conforming use aspect of it. If a gas station closed, how much longer would they have to reopen it if a new owner wanted to take possession of that and open it? If we default to our current non-conforming use in the zoning code, it's only a hundred and eighty days. That was one of the concerns we heard. And then the second concern was really questions around expansion and remodel. And so I think we've come up with some things that, for your consideration. Again, we're seeking direction to potentially bring this to Planning Commission since it does go in the zoning ordinance for them to review it and make a recommendation back to council for adoption or consideration. So the modification section, this would be, what's included in your packet would be a new section in our zoning code specific to, to gas stations. And it does call out the provisions for modification. So you would not be able to expand the fuel use, so there would be no additional pumps or enlarged uses related to the fuel. But modifications would be allowed for stormwater, groundwater, pedestrian circulation, EV charging. We had a discussion about that, if it makes sense to have EV charging at gas stations. Under this, they would be allowed to do that. And the commercial use is not related to fossil fuels could be modified or expanded. In terms of the discontinuation of the use, so they'd get twelve months. And this is just how this is written, this can be amended based on your direction or Planning Commission. But they would get twelve months to re, to reestablish the use. They could get an additional twelve months if someone has a building permit and remodeling it. So they could get potentially two years. Terms of maintenance, they can replace the pumps, as long as there's no increase in the number of pumps. So there would be, as we're proposing here, this would be a new section. This would be in addition to all the other amendments in the zoning code, the use table. This would be in addition to all the other amendments in the zoning code, the use table, the other areas that talk about gas stations that are outlined in your staff report that were also needed to be amended, so they would be bundled up and reviewed by the planning commission and brought back if, if that is the direction tonight. So that's, that really concludes my report. The proposed gas station section is a, is an attachment on your staff report as number... I don't have the number. It's, I think it's, it'll be attached. So again, we're seeking direction. If you'd like for us to, to bring this to planning commission, again, it's in zoning, so all zoning amendments require a planning commission recommendation to the council. So we're here for questions.
Sir, I, I just have a question. If I could, how about vehicle repair shops that do not sell fuel? Would this also put a ban on those? They do automobile repairs, oil changes, those types of things.
No.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I spoke with, and, and I'm real sorry, I, I forget his name. Woody. Woody Hastings. Is he here tonight, or I don't?
There he is.
Well, Woody, we spoke on the phone, and I, I just have some questions slash concerns. I guess the first one is, how do we know that six gas stations is enough for Cloverdale? I mean, is there some statistical data per registered cars in the city of Cloverdale? You need X amount of fuel stations? I'd also like to know if there was, and you answered this question on the phone, but just so it's public, if you did any surveys within the city to see how Cloverdallians feel about this. Also, is your organization vented by any other governmental organization? I.e., do you have the, the backing of the state senate or the assembly, the county? I don't think the county has adopted this yet. And I, I guess I'm just trying to get past the idea that here's a group of well-intended individuals coming in front of the city council, asking them to do a ban in a moratorium on a business. And I don't know that, that you have the support of anybody else in the state that, that kind of blesses what you're doing. So, so that's my concern. And with that, I'll, I'll hold my other questions until we get into the nitty-gritty.
I'm... It's a really good staff report, by the way, Kevin. You really addressed the issues that were raised in, in the last council meeting, and I think a lot of the community concerns. I was appreciative to see three people, right, in support of this, who are Cloverdale residents. I don't really see how it serves us to go after an advocacy group that's been successful in other cities and who is pretty well-respected throughout the county and question that, you know, Cloverdale residents do or don't want this. I think that we've seen the, the correspondence that's come in and it's a support for a gas ban. But I think that first and foremost, what was evident after, you know, the last meeting is that, you know, this is a land use issue, but it's also, you know, the kind of land use issue that has powerful economic impacts, and it's exactly where the city council and the planning commission should be. This isn't a referendum on electric cars, and it's not a referendum on EV charging. This is how we're going to shape our community and serve our residents for decades to come. You know, again, this, this is a land use issue, and it's a land use issue in a city that is riddled with abandoned brownfields where gas stations used to stand. And those brownfields damage our tax base to this day. This is an economic issue, and it's a land use issue. You know, current California law, when we look into the future and our responsibility as policymakers for our community, California law prohibits sale of ICE engines in California after 2035. We're not going to be able to purchase Dodge Chargers, which is the car that our police department has standardized on for patrol cars. An ICE version after twenty, we're not going to be able to purchase ICE versions after 2024 because Dodge has discontinued them because of the leadership of California on this issue. In land use terms, you know, our phase out of ICE vehicles in 2035, it's just around the corner. I mean, I was on the planning commission for seven years, and the issues that I was addressing then are coming to fruition now and have been. So the time is now. This needs to be reviewed by our planning commission with the help of our community development director, and it needs to be viewed through a local lens while, while accounting for the, the unique zoning areas that our current gas stations sit in and where we're already seeing charging stations. So the gas stations that are currently adjacent to downtown, and those are the Quick Stop, the Fast and Easy, and the Gas and Go. Those are essential neighborhood locations and have a strong potential to continue to be neighborhood convenience stores and even possibly even neighborhood EV charging for one very important reason, in that they are walkable and accessible to our neighborhoods. And they're going to continue to enhance our neighborhood walkability for decades. That's why it's so important that we take action to protect them. So those are going to be important for our residents and for those local business owners as we transition away from fossil fuels. They're valuable commercial locations that are walkable to those neighborhoods, and they have an innate potential to transition to successfully serve EV drivers because of their walkability and their locations. The station's currently located in the auto-oriented commercial district at the south of town, and this is what makes us different from other cities, and this is why our local planning commission needs to examine this very carefully. That auto-oriented commercial district at the south end of town, it does not share the advantages of the stations that are located adjacent to residential neighborhoods, and it, they don't share that advantage, and it's by design. The commercial district at the south end of town, where we've got gas stations and fast food and those larger commercial stores, as well as some of the, the car block station, they are quick trip oriented by design. They are different zones by design. The potential for conversion to EVs is extremely poor in these areas, and it's why we've already seen EV fast charging go in at Ferber Plaza. And where EV, that's where EV drivers can shop and eat while they're high-speed charging. There's a reason that we're already seeing the trend toward that in our, in our, in our shops, and we're not seeing charging stations go into gas stations that are located in auto-oriented zones. Again, this is not a referendum on EVs. I don't care if you like them or not, but it's plain and simple land use issue. The idea that all gas stations are going to become charging station is absurd in the extreme. I know this because I drive an EV. We need to make sure that we protect our locally-owned neighborhood gas stations and that they're not put out of business by yet another card lock station that will maybe be around for twenty years. Another card lock station is going to be another place where our locally-owned gas stations are going to be undercut and could eventually go out of business. And it's, it's imperative that we protect them during what is, it's a drawdown of fossil fuels, and it's coming, whether you believe it or not, it's state law, it's coming. That's why we have the responsibility to take action on this. So I'm supporting sending this to the planning commission for review and with the express instructions to review our current gas stations and their current zoning and the current use and their future viability to be neighborhood EV stations because the big commercial auto-oriented gas stations are not where people want to charge, and they aren't going to be. So the time is now for us to move on this. Land use works at a glacial pace until it doesn't. This is going to be here before we know it, and we need to take action on it.
Mr. Mayor, I have asked a couple of questions, and I don't think Woody had a chance to answer those questions, so.
Would you like to step up if you don't mind? You want to ask the questions again today?
Sure. Woody? I, I remember him.
You can state your name for the...
Good evening. Yes, of course, Woody Hastings. I am the co-coordinator of Crossroads, not-for-profit, volunteer-run organization, the Coalition Opposing New Gas Stations. I live in unincorporated Sonoma County, and clearly we're here tonight to support the, the council referring the matter to the planning commission so that they, it's, my comments tonight, in addition to answering your questions, are around the process. So it's really, we really do think it, it makes sense to refer it to the planning commission so they can chew on it and look at it and hand it back to the council, and in that further process, you know, the vote to do this or not isn't tonight. That would be in the hands of the future newly-to-be-seeded city council. To address the questions that you asked, Councilmember Walter, so we, the Coalition, as I said, we're limited in capacity. We're a group of volunteers in Sonoma County that have been doing this sparked initially by a real big surprise of a gas station, sixteen pumps and a car wash and the mini-mart and all that in a rural location between Catati and Sebastopol, and we were very surprised by that. And then we found that there are other gas station proposals. So that was how we were initiated in 2019. We don't have the capacity to do the kind of analysis you're talking about, about how many are required, but what we found city to city to city, starting in Petaluma, Rona Park, Sebastopol, Santa Rosa, Windsor, there's an abundance of gas stations in Sonoma County, and there's six here, and, you know, you could ask your friends and folks you know in Cloverdale whether they have a hard time getting gas, finding a gas station and getting gas. Most, you know, the market has done a good job, I think, of providing us with that service. And by the way, we do also agree, the existing gas stations are an essential service, right? New gas stations aren't necessarily an, an essential service. The other question was about, about surveys of your residents. I'll just hark back on the empirical experience that we've had in Sonoma County, again, with each of the six previous cities, that it's been an overwhelming degree of support from the residents in, in those areas and from, by and large, from the elected officials and staff and others. And then in terms of Congress being connected, joined at the hip with any other entity, state or otherwise, federal, state or county or anything, no. We have, we, we actually don't have any funding. We're volunteer-based, and we don't have blessing. I will say, in terms of blessing, you used the word blessing from the state. The state is on a trajectory to, to what they call decarbonize, to get us away from fossil fuels, to bring us to a new clean energy economy, and it's on like a twenty-year track to do that. Our assessment, and people frequently say, why not just let market forces take care of this? Here's why. Elected leaders are put into a position to, to make decisions on behalf of their community, and as Councilmember Bagby said, it's a land use decision. And gas stations are, you know, a land use that not everybody really wants to necessarily be a neighbor of a gas station. No, no offense against gas stations, but they're not that desirable to, to, to be next to. And each time you put one in, you've created what becomes known as a brownfield, a contaminated site that needs remediation and all that kind of thing. The developers of gas stations tend to look back. They predict, they look back at what's the performance been, the market performance of a gas station in the past twenty years, and they sort of figure, okay, it's going to be pretty much the same going forward. That's their guess. They maybe look at a few things going forward. I don't think that they've really looked at the policy changes that are coming. And, and so if, if that is what they're basing their decision to, to try to open a new gas station in the 2020s, we are convinced that they're making a mistake. And I think at the last council meeting, I referred to them, that they could become a stranded asset. I want to change that. It's a stranded liability. It's a stranded liability. You're going to have this new gas station that in just a few years, you know, it's going to, probably going to need to close down because this, 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 this trend is, is going to accelerate, we're convinced. So that's, those are my responses. Oh, and, and, you know, I'm, I'm all in favor of electric vehicles or some other type of power other than fossil fuel. It's just a question, are we making the right decision for Cloverdale? You know, based on, based on the number of cars that we have now, the demographics of the individuals. And I get it, in 2035, we're not going to be able to have fossil fuel vehicles. But my, my questions revolve around, is this the right thing for Cloverdale now, or do we wait? Well, again, I think the process, having the planning commission look at that and see if it's the right thing for Cloverdale, and then having it come back again to the council to see if it's the right thing for Cloverdale, that process will help answer that question. And maybe we can, the, the analysis you're asking for might be out there, and maybe there'd be a way to do a survey of the community between now and then. Last thing I want to say, because I'm sure I'm way over three minutes, is that this measure, the one that's been done in six previous cities, doesn't force anybody to go out shopping for an EV. There's no need for that. People can still fill up at the gas station and drive their gas car. Even in 2035, that policy about 2035 is the state of California no longer registering new gas cars. Everybody's still going to be able to drive their gas car and fill up at a gas station. We are not talking about forcing people into EVs or closing down gas stations.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Cruz? No questions? Okay.
I just have one comment. I need to correct myself. I rechecked the packet. We, and letters from residents on this. Five people who I know for a fact live within Cloverdale city limits support moving forward with this. One person who lives outside of the city limits has said that they have some concerns and they would possibly be opposed. So I'm kind of, I'm, I'm befuddled and bewildered by the insistence that there needs to be a, a, a survey when we've made bigger decisions on less information from our constituents.
Well, you know, we have a population of a little more than five, Councilmember Bagby.
We have a population of closer to nine thousand people.
There you go.
And we have six gas stations, and I've never seen a line in front of them since, after the PSPS.
I'm sorry, I didn't get that.
So we have nine thousand through the census. I would probably estimate we're closer to 12,000 here right now. I mean, guessing, obviously. I mean, anybody can say I'm wrong, and I could be, and it doesn't matter, really. When we had a population of 3,000, we had nine gas stations here. And as Councilmember Bagby said, there are some sites in town that don't have businesses at them, but they are not because they haven't been remediated, it's because the people haven't built on them. There are no sites that are left with damage from having a gas station on them. That's, that is a not true statement.
Our city, our community development could confirm that because it's my understanding that many of those sites represent a considerable investment and that's, makes it difficult for construction to pencil out at those locations.
What I was able to find on the State Water Resources Board, they do have a map of Cloverdale where there's remediated underground storage tanks. And there was about ten that were associated to gas stations. They did indicate that those were completed, the remediation was completed. But, so that's what I...
So as of right now, we have no sites that are, have not been remediated that are sitting vacant because...
According to that map, there's a few that are current, but they weren't associated with gas stations. But there was the one, there was a Texaco near Ace Hardware, the one up north where it was the home. And there was, you can see on the map, I can send you the link.
You had a shell on the triangle piece next to the railroad. You had seventy-six where the grocery outlet is sitting. You had a BP station on the corner of First Street where they're turning in the wine. I've, I've been here for all of them, and so...
And the Dollar General, I think, was a site as well, too. And it made it difficult and expensive to develop because of its status. So if anyone should be leading on this, it should be Cloverdale.
So when I look at the decisions I make as the mayor, or even just as a council member for Cloverdale, I'm here to make decisions that push policies that help our community and benefit the community, that don't burden them. And right now, we're less than five percent of electric vehicles, and we're already having power grid issues. And what people don't know is our power grid. The reason we had power during the summer is we were being run off of generator from PG&E. They were supplying us enough power to power thirty-seven houses off of diesel generators here in Cloverdale, and that is what kept us on. That is why we didn't have our blackouts like everyone else did. That is why we didn't have our blackouts like everyone else did. So it's virtually impossible at this point, and you can ask PG&E for us to start eliminating. And I know that's not the point of this. I get that. Please let me finish.
Yeah, it's not...
Let everyone talk first.
That is not... That's not what's before us this evening. This is a land use issue that is before us.
This, it is more than a land use issue. You are trying to stop the free market. If there's a demand for a product, we should be allowing...
Actually, I don't agree with that characterization.
Excuse me, can I please talk?
I do not agree with the characterization that I am single-handedly trying to stop the free-market economy in Cloverdale. Would you please withdraw that comment?
No.
Okay. Well, then, okay. So I thought we could have a mature conversation. Do not... You are not entitled to hyperbole. Please try to keep your comments on the item that is before us.
First off, I did not single you out. Second off, I...
Yes, you did, and it's on video that you did. You said you are trying to stop the free-market economy in Cloverdale. That is a personal attack and a characterization. It has nothing to do with the item before us, Mr. Mayor. Please keep your comments on the item and refrain from just aspersions like that. Or I will stop the meeting. And I will insist that you control the crowd, because that is also... You're required to do that by Robert's rules.
Okay. Well, I'm gonna tell you right now, this is my turn to speak and not yours. So stop speaking.
Point, point of order, Mr. Mayor. I insist, point, point of order, Mr. Mayor.
Five-minute break.
Point of order, Mr. Mayor. I insist that you...
Recording stopped.
Is there anyone in the audience that has anything they would like to make a comment on? Please come forward. Just a reminder to please state your name for the record.
Make an accommodation, three minutes, thank you. Explode it for me maybe. Yeah, I'm Reese Foxon. Over here, down here. Anyway, I live in Cloverdale, have lived here for 22 years. And I am in support of sending this on to the Planning Commission and potentially banning any future gas stations. We are in a period of change, period. And if we don't look forward and adjust to it and think ahead, then we're going to be, have a lot more problems on our hands than we would otherwise. Sonoma County has been in the forefront of a number of things around climate. Energy and sustainability, providing ways for residents to get solar systems on their house. I mean, it was all Sonoma County that started that and found some, I think, good ways to do it. We have EV charging stations around the city. And I can remember when I was eight, in the late 40s, we were going from Southern California to Northern California to visit my uncle. And in those days, there wasn't a gas station on every corner. And you had to plan very, very tightly, the driving. And we got to Paso Robles and car ran out of gas a few feet from the gas station. So we had to get out and push the car in. That won't happen, I don't think, with EV chargers. Number one, we already have some in town. And it's also incentives are available for people to put them in their homes. We got one and we didn't have to pay a cent for it because of the number of incentives that were available at the time. And they're coming down with the infrastructure bill that was just passed. There's going to be even more. So I think we're worrying, but I think we need to think ahead and I think we need to plan. And planning is protecting Cloverdale, protecting its citizens from overuse. And putting more gas stations in, I think, is an inappropriate use of our town. So maintaining what we have, rebuilding if we can, yes. But because we're going to need gasoline. And I think the gas stations that we have now are very, they're appropriate and there is enough for us. We're no longer the stop on 101. The freeway bypassed us, which cut some of the usage of the gas stations. So anyway, please consider sending it on to the Planning Commissions. It's, it's an important thought. We need to think ahead. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. Oh, this works really well, even with the mask on. I'm Vicki Groom. I've lived in Cloverdale this time for 14 years. However, I was born and raised here back in the 60s. Oh, no, wait a minute, 40s. What's the matter with me? Wishful thinking. Anyway, as a Cloverdale citizen concerned about the ongoing and worsening emergency, climate emergency, I urge that this matter be referred to the Planning Commission to draft an ordinance to prohibit the permitting and construction of new gas stations, as well as expanding existing pumps. I think we should enjoy, should join the efforts of our cities in our county to prohibit the possibility of any new contamination of our groundwater and air. It is concerning that we already have some contaminated sites because of abandoned gas stations. At least that's what I surmise from the conversation. The City Council adopted the Climate Emergency Declaration in 2019. I believe to move forward with preventing any additional contamination and honoring this declaration, I urge that there, that a referral be made to the Planning Commission to take the next steps. Thank you.
You. Next.
Yes, my name is Richard Wells and I'm a resident of Cloverdale for 23 years. And I would, I, I would not want to ban anything at this point in time because you don't know what is in the future. Some other things could happen that could alter us. And if you put a ban on gas stations, then you have no other alternative to go to if some other event causes catastrophic damage to our existing gas stations. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Derek Quantani. I'm a resident here. One question, do we have or how many current applications for new gas stations do we have in town? And how many have we had in the last 10 years? Also, the previous speaker had mentioned contamination in the water. I would think if there's water contamination, the people of the city would know about it immediately. And I just want to know if there's been any data collection or any studies done to make this a well-informed decision as opposed to a decision for feelings or what might happen in the future. Thank you.
You. Ron?
Yes, the answer, do we have any pending applications?
Kevin? At this time, the city does not have any active proposals. There was a recent proposal that has since been deemed incomplete for a car lock station within the last 10-year timeframe. I don't have the complete history, but I do know there was a, a modification to a conditional use permit for Chevron gas station. And there was also some remodel work done. I don't believe it involved changes to the, to the number of pumps, but to, to the retail structure that associate, that was associated with one of our existing gas stations. And prior to that, we'd have to do some additional analysis regarding the historical development of gas stations within the city.
Thank you.
Yeah, just on, on a comment I heard about contamination, lead or otherwise, one of the reasons I moved to Cloverdale after the Tubbs fire where we lost our home, which by the way, was caused by an electrical transformer, was the fact that you had good clean water and of course, the area is fantastic. So that, that's why we moved here. And Darren Hernandez confirmed for me back then that there was no lead in the water and there was no other kind of contamination of groundwater. So that helped cement the deal for moving here. I wasn't going to talk on this topic, but I'm with the last gentleman that instead of any coercive regulations or bans, that the city should consider its existing policy. I looked it up, but there's a CDO 8.2 and a CDO 8.3 to encourage the city's six existing gas station owners to add dedicated support for electric vehicle charging stations. Within your own descriptions on the policies, it makes no sense to charge your car, for example, at Ferber Plaza, where you can't clean your windshield, check your tire pressure, effect minor repairs, or pick up some replacement items for vehicle. And I also believe you drive an EV and I believe you need to check your tire pressure more frequently just due to the weight of vehicle, for example. So it's good to have-
Actually, the EV checks the tire pressure for me.
Right. But if you're going to go charge your car, why not have the air pressure thing there?
I can do it at home, too, just like I charge.
There you can. Okay. Instead of reen, I would say instead of reinforcing what I call a culture of no to existing and future energy businesses, consider working with the current operators, and you identified six, it sounded like, to support the three reference general plan policies, also including your CDO 3.7, to upgrade the appearance of structures that were built when Cloverdale Boulevard was a state highway. I think a few of you mentioned that. I certainly wasn't around when that was the case. And I think as a side note, this approach should be looked at for the derelict, non-functional car wash business on the east side of Clover, east side of South Cloverdale Boulevard. So with that in mind, has the city considered facilitating a partnership with the Gas and Go owner on South Cloverdilla Board and the next door car wash owner to develop a special EV charging plaza where neighbors could go and maybe even have coffee and stuff? But in general, I believe bans and excessive regulation in general are counterproductive. Let the market decide, Woody, where drivers choose to fuel their vehicles, whether it's a gas station, an electric vehicle charging plaza, or an innovative mixed-fuel business where gas, propane, and/or electricity are available. Why prevent that if someone wants to do it in the future? I'd also like to see hundreds of letters from Cloverdallians, how they feel on bans before any Planning Commission referral. We've got hundreds of letter on water. I'd like to see hundreds of letters if the citizens want a ban. But until you get those hundreds of letters and that kind of excitement, I can't see referring it to the commission. Thank you.
You. Anyone else in the audience? How about on? We have one more in the audience right here. Sorry.
Hi there, my name is Anamie from the Corpet and I'm a resident of Cloverdale. And I think actually that the ban on new gas stations in town is a great idea. The trend is going away from using gas stations. I mean, the, there's a lot of people that are wanting greener and, and more sustainable, you know, environment and fossil fuel is not the way to get there. And auto industry has, has taken note of that and there's a lot of options for alternatives, which means that the need for gas stations is only going to get less and not more. Sonoma County has 140 roughly gas stations for a half a million people, which is one for every 3,500. Cloverdale has 9,000 inhabitants and six gas stations, which is quite a bit more, is more than double the, the average in Sonoma County. So we certainly do not need any more. So how is a ban going to affect the people in Cloverdale? Absolutely not. It's not going to raise the price of gas because there is not going to be a shortage of, of gasoline. And it's also not going to make it harder for people to get to the grocery store and to work or school or sports because there, it's not going to impact people at all. There is going to be plenty of places to get gas. And if not in Cloverdale, most people in a car go somewhere. So they will encounter gas stations elsewhere. There is Ukiah, there is Healdsburg, there, really, there is no shortage of, of gas stations. So why the ban then? And the reason for that is that gas stations are not clean entities. They pollute, they pollute the air, they have issues with the tanks in the ground. And so by not allowing any new gas stations, I think we're keeping our city clean. And that's the reason why I support a ban on new ones. So it just, there's really no impact on the citizens of Cloverdale or anywhere else and it's going to keep our city clean. Thank you.
You. Anyone else in the audience? Seeing none, let's go Zoom.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have a few hands. We'll start with Vic Ayudo. I'll give you permission to speak and then you'll have three minutes.
Thank you. I just want to say that I do support the ban. I think that there have been a couple of comments made by both public officials and others that are pretty erroneous. While there was, at one point, as a lifelong Northern Californian, there were many gas stations in Cloverdale. That was when the highway went through town and people needed to fuel in town. So the notion that somehow equating our current six with years, decades ago, literally, number of gas stations is a false equivalent. The reality is that we are moving towards an all-elective, all-electric vehicle world. And as many have mentioned, we are moving towards that rapidly. And the fact that gas stations historically create additional costs for communities for cleanup, there are many occasions where gas stations have gone bankrupt and the, you know, the cities and municipalities have had to pay for those. So it isn't necessarily an onus that's on that private business, it's on the community and the citizens of Cloverdale. The final comment I have is a political one. The mayor referred to people in his interview on Fox News with Neil Cavuto who support the ban on gasoline stations as a virtual signal, signaler, which is a term that basically implies that people who support whatever they are virtually signaling are disingenuous and they don't really believe in those beliefs. So I'm curious if the mayor can explain his comments on that. And does he truly believe that people who oppose his position on this, at least up to this point, are disingenuous in their belief? Thank you.
Vic. Next, we have Ashley Lopes White. One moment.
Hi, thank you. Can you hear me? Okay. Thank you. What many people don't understand is that there are two assembly bills that were passed that are really important to consider in this conversation, AB 6 and AB 2011. They both give the authority to rezone commercial parcels for middle to low-income housing. From my understanding, most of the undeveloped parcels in, in our immediate area that don't already have approved building plans are zoned for commercial use. Those of us that have been paying attention lately know what's going on in our state regarding the housing crisis. Low-income housing developers, many of which are centralized outside of our state, are making large amounts of money off of developing low-income housing with little regards to the impact on the surrounding areas. For example, the impact on our schools, the community, and the residents that would qualify for that housing. There's also, as we know, little to nothing the city can do to oppose or restrict any low-income developments from being built here. There are less restrictions on building low-income housing than there is to build new fuel stations. There is a very real chance that Cloverdale will see a large residential expansion in our future, most of which will likely not be people in the market for buying electric vehicles or any new vehicles for that matter. No one is saying, let's go build more gas stations, but the movement will restrict the city from being able to accommodate the potential needs that are a very real possibility in our future. Also, from my understanding from the previous meeting and a little bit from what I heard tonight, this would also restrict the cure, the current fuel stations that we do have from ever being able to add more fuel pumps, which would also be a good alternative to let our current and local mom and pop-owned gas stations, letting them expand rather than a new gas station coming in to begin with. So really, we're lim, this would be also limiting and restricting our current gas stations from ever expanding. I would really just recommend all of you think about how many new housing developments have already been approved. Look at the undeveloped parcels in towns that could potentially become new housing developments, most of which can and will be low to middle-income developments, and look unbiasedly at the potential of ever needing more, more fuel stations or allowing the current fuel stations to expand. And how all of this will impact our underserved population who are not going to be driving electric vehicles. They are going to have to depend on fuel-driven, either gas or diesel-powered vehicles. Is this really about our community's best interest and what's coming in the future or is it about showing how green we are? And I'll stop there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ashley. Next, we have Helen Brutton.
Good evening, council. First off, welcome to the person who moved here after the fire. Welcome to town. Gas stations, just because it looks like everyone else is doing it doesn't mean it's a good idea. It's nice to plan for the future. It's essential that we plan for the future. And people think they know where we're heading, but we can't guarantee the future. And we have enough laws that are already pushed onto us. Why would we voluntarily restrict ourselves? We could be the last people with gas in the area and we are a critical hub for fuel before people head out to the coast. The next place I get gas is Fort Bragg. Gas is the reason people stop in Cloverdale all the time. They stop here for gas, they'll stay in the hotel, they'll eat in the restaurants on the way to wherever they're going. That's why we have so many per capita. No one is planning to put a station in at this time and putting in a new gas station is not cheap. So if the market isn't going to support it, we aren't going to get more. So it feels like this association, the volunteers, are trying to conjure up this threat that we're going to have 20 new gas stations. I think we should not restrict ourselves. I know when you're on, in a decision-making position, it's really tempting to make a decision, but sometimes the best thing to do is to make a decision to do nothing. So I do not want to waste City Council time. I do not want to waste Planning Commission time. I do not want to waste city staff time. I do not support this proposal. Thank you.
You.
Thank you, Helen. Next, we have Jenny Blaker.
Jenny, can you hear us?
Jenny, I can see the icon that you have a microphone attached, but it doesn't seem to be moving, which usually indicates that it's not picking up your volume and we cannot hear you at this time. Seconds. Jenny, through Zoom, you might have to change your settings and switch to another microphone.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, now we can.
Can you hear me?
We have you, Jenny. Go ahead, please.
I'm trying to deal with the audio settings.
Miss Blaker, we can hear you.
Jenny, we can hear you if you can go ahead and start your public comment.
Hello?
Yes, Jenny, we can hear you. Yes, we can. Can you?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Can you hear us?
Can you hear me? I can't hear you.
You hear me now?
Never mind.
Would it be helpful when we try to promote her as a panelist temporarily?
Okay. I don't know if you can hear me or not. This is Jenny Blaker. I am, join as panelist, okay?
Jenny, I've just temporarily promoted you to panelist. We were able to hear you. Are you able to hear us now?
She's muted.
Likely, we can, we can hear her microphone, but her speaker on her end probably is not working.
I'm sorry about the technical difficulties. I'm not sure what's going on. I just wanted to emphasize that of course, the climate crisis is on us and that this is to do with reducing our dependency on fossil fuels into the future because we know that vehicle transportation is the main source of greenhouse gas emissions and we need to be reducing our dependency on, on fossil fuels. The market for electric vehicles is expanding, they're getting cheaper, there are more and more discounts available and that kind of thing. Also, hopefully, when there are new, new residents in Cloverdale because of increased low-income housing, hopefully there will also be better infrastructure to help people get around without needing to have a private car to drive everywhere, since we also want to be working on better infrastructure for pedestrians and bicyclists, better public transportation, better town planning, so that people don't have to rely on cars for everything. And I just want to emphasize that, yes, as well as the climate crisis, there's also the issue of quality of life, the impacts that gas stations have on air quality, human health, groundwater, surface water, they all, there are always leaks and spills and contamination from gas station sites. So I, I urge you to at least consider this and also just remind you that this is just about considering it. And the next step would be to send it to the Planning Commission to do some of the analysis for the local situation and the questions that people have been asking about that. It's not a vote tonight, it's just looking at it and potentially asking the Planning Commission to look at it and come back to the City Council. Thank you for your time and your patience.
Thank you. See any other hands under the attendees list? So just need to remove. I can see her.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. No one else is raising their hand at this time.
We have one more from the audience.
Hi, I'm Brooke Green. My husband and I have been here for 38 years and we're very, very happy and proud to be part of the community. And in 2019, when the City Council decided to make climate part of every decision going forward, as I understood it, I was really proud of you guys. And I just want us to be forward-looking. Sometimes it seems like we make decisions thinking that the way things have been done in the past is the only good way or the only thing we're comfortable with. But times change and we can do, we can affect change and make positive decisions and still be a wonderful, welcoming town. But we have to accept that there is change coming in the world. So that's it.
You.
And with that, Mr. Mayor, no one else is raising their hand on Zoom or in the audience.
Thank you. I'll bring her back to the dais. Councilor Cruz, would you like to go first?
Well, I, I think that we just need to act responsibly and vote on the standards that we are considering. Well, recommend, not vote. And it's, it's essential that we, we start moving on all these issues that do relate to climate change. And, but you know, that's not what we are recommending right now. That's not really the object of this, is land use.
Would you like to go next?
Certainly. I really appreciate the comments from, from the public and they bring up a lot of issues and that is, and a lot of really great questions. Well, gee, how many, how many gas stations do you, do you need? And I think the kind of rule, planning rule of thumb is about 2,000. That's kind of what I've been able to find. We have six gas stations per 9,000 people, that's about 1,500. If we had 12,000 people living here, which right now, that's consistent with our water plan, that's the water treatment capacity, sewer treatment capacity is about 12,000 according to our, our water plan. And if you divide that by six gas stations, that's 2,000. That's right on the mark. So that's what we're talking about. But I think more importantly, what we're talking about here tonight is not, we're not making a decision about banning new gas stations or being anti-business or, you know, talking about EVs or charging or the grid. We're talking about sending this to the Planning Commission for research. A commission that I spent seven years serving, five as chair, a commission who we thanked Mike for 15 years of service, of taking on issues like this and doing the heavy lifting and making a recommendation for the council and answering these questions. We also suffer tonight from not having a city engineer at the dais. And there were really good questions about, well, wait a minute, what about groundwater contamination? I thought we had great groundwater. We were, we were, I was guaranteed we have great water in this town. We do have great water in this town because we get it from the Russian River from surface wells. That's surface water. But we have sadly, just like so many other towns, decades of, of needed remediation of groundwater. decades of needed remediation of groundwater. Groundwater in town is different from the surface water where we source our, our water for our water treatment plant. And if we had a city engineer here, they could explain that. If Kevin wants to go in and, if I missed anything, if you guys want to, you know, that's what we're talking about, though. So I think that those are really great questions that were brought up. And those were great questions that can be brought up at the planning commission. This is about starting a discussion about where we want to go where land use is concerned. And where also, the very important question is of where we want to put our very limited staff resources. SEQA document on a new gas station is a huge investment. And we are understaffed. We, this is something that's doable for this town. And so I think that we should continue the conversation. Let the planning commission do its thing. Let Kevin lead the discussion. Take all of the questions, all of the concerns, and turn it over to the planning commission for further discussion. Because that's the system that we have and that has served us well. Not shutting down debate on difficult topics that take us out of our comfort zone, but having a conversation with the community and at the planning commission. So I would really like us to, I'd like to see us plan for our future, listen to our constituents, and let's continue the conversation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A lot of good points, a lot of good information, strong feelings on both sides. You know, I'm looking at it. We currently do not have any pending applicants. So there's no urgency to move forward right now. We have two new city council members going to be seated, possibly three. But Vice Mayor Walter is going to be elected, hopefully, when it's all settled. But there's surely going to be two new faces up here. This is an important discussion. And it bothers me that they're not going to be able to be part of this, sending their concerns or comments or suggestions when it goes forward to the planning, planning commission, assuming that's the direction of the council. So I, I'd like to see this table brought back in May, in January, where the full council's here, the new council, who's going to not only send it to the planning commission if they choose so, they'll have all their input provided to the planning commission. And when it comes back, they'll be part of that conversation. Two of us will not be here when it comes back. And the new people sitting won't have any input into what they want the planning commission to look for. So I, I'm more inclined to say there's no urgency. We have no applicants. This could easily move to January, be agenda. We have full council who's going to be here for the duration of the discussion, both going into the planning commission and when the planning commission comes back with their hard work and their recommendations. So that, that's where I sit with this right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, Councilmember Paula, I have to agree with you. I think the best route would be let it, let it lay, get the new council seated, let them make the changes. They're the ones that are going to have to approve or to turn it down. So my suggestion is we, we just hold off on this.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead, Councilmember Cruz.
Thank you. You know, I think to bring this back to council would be to beat a dead horse. The people who got elected have been watching council meetings. And it's also our responsibility when we start as new council members to catch up with whatever is happening in the city. Otherwise, everything gets put on hold until that gets sworn in and they start in January. So, I mean, we have discussed this twice already. And we're not saying it's not coming back. Because going to the planning commission means that this is going to be discussed. And the public is going to be able to have a loud voice, one way or the other. And also, as they prepare, the planning commissioners will be able to provide even further information. To table this, I think, would be to be disrespectful to the time that we have already put into this. And I did prepare for these meetings as, as everybody else should have. And I think we have enough information to pass it on to, and the new council members can catch up. That's our obligation. That's what I had to do when I started four years ago. So I don't see any reason why it needs to be tabled.
May I, Mr. Mayor? They, you're absolutely right, Councilmember Cruz. They should catch up. But by the same token, when do they get a chance to vent their questions and give direction to the planning commission?
I would need to respond to that by asking the senior planning commissioner on board in the city council. Does this get discussed enough for only, not only the planning commission, but also with the community and the council? Councilmember Bagby?
Maybe the community development director could delineate the process when we send something to the planning commission, just for, you know, everyone's edification, what the process is. Because again, this is just, this is sending this to the planning commission, just like we'd send it to a subcommittee. And it's going to go through its process. So could you describe what the process would be and the time that new council members would have to give their input?
Well, generally, we would receive direction from the council to pursue an ordinance or an ordinance amendment. And then we would take it to planning commission, try to outline all the objectives and things that the council wanted to see in the ordinance. We don't try to hem them in by saying, you know, we have to have this because the council wanted it, because we try to just get a good conversation going. Generally, that could take one or two meetings. And then when I bring it back to the city council, I try to list all of the concerns of the planning commission and the recommendations. And then you have another chance to, you have, I should say, you do have a chance to consider what they were recommending, you know, to say yes or no to those.
Excuse me, Kevin. Could you give us a timeline of what one or two meetings mean?
Well, we meet once a month for the planning commission. So, you know, if directed, we could potentially bring this in January. And, you know, it depends if, they have a lot of questions. It's not uncommon to do an ordinance over two meetings. Or it could potentially be one meeting. I mean, I would think this might be two, but I don't know for sure. So that's two months and then back to council. If the council, you know, introduced it, there would be two hearings at the council. You know, the second would be on consent and then it goes into effect 30 days after that.
Mr. Mayor, may I comment one more thing?
Please, go ahead.
So I think that's plenty of time to meet each planning commissioner, talk to the newly appointed mayor in January, and also to spend time with Kevin. So I don't see, you know, what the time situation is. I mean, this is one of the simple things we need to address in council. Let's go ahead and start processing this. Because much, many, and much more complicated situations will be coming forth. And again, we never know, as everybody's saying. We don't know about the future, so. We don't know if we're going to be in another predicament like we were with the pandemic or the fires or something as such, so.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, I, I don't see an urgency. We have nobody out there. There's no new gas stations are going to break ground in the next six months. There's just, and I think out of respect for the new two people that are going to be seated, they should be able to ask questions. They should be able to weigh in on, on this. If this was time-sensitive, I'd feel differently, but it isn't. And so there is time. And I don't feel it's a waste of time. I think it's an important conversation. But I do think, out of respect, the two new individuals should be able to weigh in, should be able to ask their questions, should be able to participate. Because at the end of the day, they have to be the ones to adopt it.
So I have a question, though, just a process question, Councilmember Pollitt. So if we send this to the planning commission tonight and it goes through their process, I mean, you know as well as I do, it comes back to the council. If the council doesn't like it, they send it back to the planning commission or they vote against it. So.
So here's my, here's my take on all of it, from everyone's point. And it was one of my items that I had here. And it was mentioned here at the dais, which was funny that it was actually something I agreed on. We're short-staffed. And we're going to spend Kevin and David and Jose's time, city council's time, planning commission time, to, to discuss something that might, the very first meeting come in here, the new council members might not want this and voted out right out the gate. Why don't we wait for them to see if this is what they would want to move forward with? So that we're not spending tens of thousands of dollars to put this into these meetings. Look at this presentation. Look at the time that was spent in here by our community director.
Well, and, and I think that there's a very simple answer to that and that this is the process. This is our process. And we should respect the fact that we have a job to do. And it continues from council to council. I think that a really good example of not waiting or of, of having waited and not addressed, not having addressed something that was a land use issue that was very important was the wine storage building, which I think we all agree we weren't really happy with that. It's because we didn't take the time to create a specific plan or to really examine the zoning at the south end of town. And we ended up with a building that really doesn't generate a lot of economic development. It doesn't generate a lot of tax dollars that maybe a different use would because we kicked the can down the road and didn't take the issue on. This is a land use issue that is relevant now and is in our best fiscal interest to address now and, and make it part of the process of planning for our different zoning areas and being able to adjust for the insurmountable movement. We're at about 18% of penetration for EVs in California. And taking a look at our different commercial zones, the ones that are adjacent to our residences and the ones that are auto-centric at the south end of town, now's the time to do that, especially in light of the development at the south end of town in developments like Baumgartner and the Dry Creek Ranch reeds. It's time for us to look at those automotive commercial zones and not ignore them like we did where the wine storage was concerned. There, I think that if, the typical process, and having been on this council for six years now and having been on the planning commission for seven years, when the council sends something to the planning commission, it goes through their process. There are one or two meetings. And then they take those findings and they submit them to the council. And at that time, the, the new sitting council can, the new sitting council can make decisions or give input at that time. There's nothing stopping that. This is really about looking to the future and about not being afraid of having difficult conversations. I don't think we should stop the process now. We're spending staff time on this. We're spending staff time on it as we speak. The cost of a SEQA application is exponentially higher than the investment that we, the smaller investment that we would make right now in working this out with our community. So I think it is important that we move forward on this this evening and just, and commit to having public hearings and public conversation and public input. Let the planning commission do their research, the legwork, and bring it back. It's their job. It's why they're there. And then when a new council takes its seat, they can continue the work and give their input at that time. That's how we've always done it in this, between the planning commission and the city council. And I think that, you know, we should respect the process, respect the continuity of that and encourage future council members to come in and definitely give their input. If they need to send it back to the planning commission, they can send it back to the planning commission at that time. But at least we will have given the public a chance and we would have, to have the questions that were raised tonight answered.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we table this item and bring it back in January when the new council is seated.
I'll, I'll second that, Mr. Mayor.
Actually, Jose, do I need to open up to public with this motion? I don't think so. I just want to make that, just want to double-check.
Councilmember Bagby?
No.
Councilmember Cruz?
No.
Councilmember Paula?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Walter?
Aye.
Mayor Lands?
Aye.
Motion passes three to two.
Just so staff's clear, this is, this staff's direction is to bring this back in this form for council reconsideration at the meeting in January.
I don't think I would have it as their first meeting. It might be a little intimidating. Maybe first one in February.
I don't know. We're, we're talking about sending something to a commission. It's not really that hard.
Obviously, it's a little bit more than that.
Well, I, I went to the last.
We're going to move, we're going to move forward to the next item, Councilmember Cruz. G2, establishing an updated salary schedule for the position of city manager and police chief, authorizing the execution of any needed amendments to the at-will employment agreements with David Kelly for the position of city manager and Jason Ferguson for the position of police chief, implementing the new salary schedules and adopting an updated City of Cloverdale salary schedule for all city employees dated November 10th, 2022.
Mayor, I'll go ahead and present the staff report. The item before you, and Mayor, you read, you read the title. And that, that does cover the, the action. It does establish an updated salary schedule for the position of city manager and the position of police chief. It also authorizes the execution of any amendments that are needed in order to implement that, that change in salary schedule. And the amendments would be to, to the agreements with David Kelly and also with Jason Ferguson in those positions. And it would adopt a new salary schedule for all the employees, for the employees of the City of Cloverdale, which would capture the changes to those two positions. As the staff report indicates, and the council has been through labor negotiations, also through an evaluation of the, of the city manager and through kind of labor negotiations and the conversation, one of the goals has always been to see kind of have Cloverdale be looking at how competitive the salaries are with Cloverdale. One of the things that the council did request was salary information of how positions, and it focused on kind of two key positions in Cloverdale, two of, two of the key positions, which would be your city manager, which is the, the head of staff, and also the police chief, which is the head of the police department. How they compared two comparables in the region. Wasn't surprising the comparables, the, the two positions are, are below comparables in, in the region. And one of the discussions of the council was, well, how can we, what can we do to the salary schedule? The item before you actually implements a 5% increase in the salary schedule for the two positions, which, as, as we all know, when you implement a change to the salary schedule, not only does it serve to, not only does it compensate the current employee, but it's also a, an increase to the salary schedule for, for, that the city has going forward. For example, for, for future employees in that, in that position, whenever that would be. Again, it's a 5% increase. And, and it's, it's also important to, to kind of indicate why the conversation came about with, with the council, just for the public, so they know. And the staff report, it does indicate some of those, those, those big, those big assignments, the big responsibilities that these two positions have. One of the examples were, well, I think one of the council members mentioned and has mentioned, you know, we're, we're always in a state of emergency. How many fires have we had where, you know, COVID, we've had droughts? We're always in a state of emergency here. When you look at your positions, one of the positions or two of the positions that are kind of heading, have a lot of those efforts with, with the EOCs, with just determining different policies. City manager, of course, is head of all staff. And then you have your police chief kind of heading the police department, also with police. We've also seen kind of an unprecedented state of, of the country, really, of civil unrest, which has been something that police departments everywhere have to, have to focus. We did see the police chief go through all of those types of sensitive issues here in Clover, in Cloverdale. The item before you does increase the salary schedule. So for example, the current employees that you have, which is our David Kelly and Jason Ferguson in those positions, they are currently at step five. So I'll just go ahead and read the difference in the step five. Again, it's just a 5% increase. So for example, the city manager's current annual salary is step five. And that's going from $179,544.53 to $188,000. and that's going from $179,544.53 to $188,521.55. The police chief, step five, is going from $167,803.34 to $1,076,193.51. And those ranges are still below your comparable jurisdictions. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Jose. Councilmember Paula?
No questions.
Say that was a very productive meeting and thanks for your hard work on this, Jose. We appreciate you and our, our staff.
Councilmember Cruz?
No, thank you very much for all these efforts and I think we're clear here.
I'll open up to the public. Any public comments? Anyone on attendees? Bring it back to the dials.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to introduce a resolution by title only, a resolution of City Council, City of Cloverdale, establishing an updated salary schedule for the position of city manager and police chief, authorizing the execution of any needed amendments to the at-will employment agreements with David Kelly for the position of city manager and Jason Ferguson for the position of police chief, implementing the new salary schedules and adopting an updated City of Cloverdale salary schedule for all city employees dated November 10th, 2022.
Second, and I'd just like to say thank you both for your service.
With that, Councilmember Bagby?
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz?
Aye.
Councilmember Paula?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Walter?
Aye.
Mayor Lands?
Aye.
Passes with five ayes. H Subcommittee reports, Finance, Admin and Police.
Real quickly, just wanted to note that on the agenda, you will find links to each of the previous Subcommittee agendas available in both Granicus and on the actual agenda itself. That, that's a tool intended to enable council members just to quickly review the agendas for each of their respective Subcommittee's. Of course, we, we know we, we review and discuss a lot of very important policy matters that are going to come before council at the Subcommittee level. And we do want to encourage the public to also view those links and review the agenda items on the respective Subcommittee's because they ultimately, many of those are going to come before you as a body for policy direction or policy input or consideration. So anyways, just wanted to point that out. Our, our goal here is to improve and enhance transparency, but also to provide that information directly to council so that you have it kind of at your fingertips in terms of what items are on the, on your respective Subcommittee's. We appreciate any feedback. We hope that you, that you'll find this a valuable way to access those agendas quickly. If you prefer an alternative, you know, any alternatives to this, please provide that feedback either to myself or our city clerk. But again, it was a, is an attempt to, to give you that readily available access for us having to go to the Agenda Center and pull those agendas.
I'll just give, and it could be user error. You can't access the agendas from Granicus.
Yeah, the links aren't live.
I figured I was ignorant.
Nope.
So that's likely due to the iLegislate app. We'll, I'll work with that because it is live from the Agenda Center, from a PDF, but it's likely an iLegislate app issue. I'll troubleshoot it and see if we can find another method.
Appreciate it. Thank you for, you guys for setting that up. That's a great tool, great asset for us. Finance, Admin and Police?
Mr. Mayor, we're going to meet December the 5th.
Sir, Planning and Sustainability?
I may have this wrong, but I have, I have December 5th. Do I have that wrong, Kevin? Sorry about that. I, yeah, that's what I'd written down. We can come back, sorry.
Public Works and Facilities?
We'll be meeting on the 16th. We had our last meeting on October the 20th. And we did a lot of hand clapping because of the pickleball courts. We're finally accomplished. The sewer hookup for the porta potty on the plaza is well underway. As a matter of fact, I think it's all done. We're just waiting for the porta potty to be set in place, flush a couple of times, make sure everything's working and then we're going to replace the cement in the plaza. One of the agenda items for the meeting that we're going to have on the 16th is starting to look for a second location for another set of pickleball, look for a location for a beanbag toss and possibly a bocce court. All of these projects are, I'd say inexpensive, but they're relatively inexpensive compared to some of the bigger things that we have to do in our parks. So we're looking at converting some of the horseshoe pits that we have. We have six over in City Park that are never used and those would make ideal beanbag tosses and even bocce courts. So more to follow. Thank you.
Thank you. Joint City and School District?
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Our next meeting is coming up on Monday, November 14th. It'll be at 4:30. It's going to be in the Maker Space, I believe, at the school.
One of the updates I heard recently was Alexander Valley Health is working on the Washington Schools, Washington Street Extension, which would be kind of in partner with the school and the city. And so that's a very positive thing coming.
Excellent, yeah.
What do you mean they're working on it? Is the shovel in the ground or are they?
With the engineers to finish the plans. Yes, sir. The plans are basically done, but it was crossing between Relgie and Race and Keldar and everyone else. Homelessness Community Advisory Group, our next meeting is December 13th and I believe our last meeting had been canceled, so it's been a while for that.
Oh, sorry. Back to Planning and Sustainability really quickly. I'm sorry, I can't read my own writing. That was, that's going to be December 20th. And just to kind of tie in to what Vice Mayor Walter was talking about as far as the restrooms, I just, I don't know if we said it at all out loud or enough out loud, but the restrooms at the plaza were really key to attracting the Santa Rosa Certified Farmer's Market coming here on Tuesdays. That was really essential and it just really shows how good planning makes other good things possible. So kudos to us moving on that and all the staff work that was involved because, yeah, again, good planning and good development policy reaps benefits down the line that you can't, you can't even predict for. So very, very good job from Public Works on that.
Council Reports, anything different than was given? Legislative Reports, Letters of Support or Opposition?
And Mayor?
City Manager Report?
Mayor, Members of Council, I just have a brief report. Want to announce that actually scheduled tomorrow, there is plans to move forward with prescribed burning at Cloverdale River Park. There's some existing vegetation that's been piled that will be removed via prescribed burning. This is going to be conducted by our Cloverdale Fire District in assistance with Cal Fire that will be onsite conducting that prescribed burn activity and also in close collaboration with Sonoma County Parks. We will expect that there will be some smoke in the air and whenever that happens, there's always concern by our residents that there's, you know, potential for wildfire. In preparation for that, our, our chief, police chief Ferguson did issue a NICSOL or community alert today, letting folks know that this activity is planned. I think it's a, it's a great activity to continue to reduce the vegetation, you know, vegetation that can contribute to wildfire activity from our Cloverdale River Park. And, you know, I think there'll be, you know, it's start of more, more to come in that.
City Attorney?
Just real quick, Mayor. The election just happening. I know everybody saw the City Treasurer, the, obviously the Office of the City Treasurer on the election, but there were, there were no names. We didn't get any, any, any interested folks for the City Treasurer position. And due to technicalities on, on kind of us having a ballot measure on the, on the ballot as well, the position was still listed on there. In case there were any write-ins, we didn't receive any writings either. That position will be vacant and we'll be discussing with the council on filling that vacancy. Also, now that the election happened, just a reminder, I will be contacting folks that are so far the apparent winners of the elections, folks that are going to be, that are elected. The top three, well, one of our top threes here and understands kind of the Brown Act. But just, just a comment for the current council and also for kind of council members coming in. As soon as somebody's elected, the Brown Act applies to them. So when you, when it appears as though you're the apparent winner of the election or the, in this case, the top three, the Brown Act already applies. There is, and for example, the League of Cities has a, has a Brown Act guide and one of the examples in it is, you know, three council members, two new council members coming in and one incoming going out to breakfast after the election to talk about potential, I guess, celebration and then talking about city business. That potentially may be, that would be a Brown Act violation. Kind of a weird, kind of the, well, how many members do we have now, right, as far as the Brown Act goes? But I'll reach out to, to the candidates that are, that seem to have won the election to just kind of go over Brown Act and also provide just the legal platform of, now you're a council member, here are the laws that apply to you and government. So I'll do, I'll do that as well in the, in the next couple of days.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, just a comment on the City Treasurer position. Several years ago, that was actually on the ballot to remove, make that an appointed position because really our city finance director handles that job and we have outside auditors that come in and so it's really, it's obsolete. There's really no reason to have that position other than it's required because it's an elected position. And the voters are the only ones that can take that position and make it an appointed position. So I would really encourage the City Council to direct staff at the next general election, whenever that is in two years, that, that go back on the ballot to see if that can be made an appointed position because it really is, it really doesn't do a function in our city.
That's actually on my list of future agenda items, so thanks for bringing that up. I completely support that, that we need to modernize that.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think I mentioned that some time ago too. It's that legacy of the past when we didn't have competent and technologically savvy financial managers.
Go the way of the dog catcher.
Current impact to the water supply?
Mayor, Members of Council, just a quick update for the current water year, which started October 1st. Based on the California Water Watch, we've received about 2.32 inches of rain since the start of our new water year. We're, we're still really below the average, the average of historical record despite, you know, the benefits of getting additional moisture. We still find ourselves in drought conditions. But nonetheless, our reservoir, our primary reservoir serving the Upper Russian Lake Minasino is in fairly good shape. It's at 68% of normal. However, while we're not directly served by Lake Sonoma, reports came out this week that it's the lowest level on, on record. With that said, given the position of our water resources, we will be looking at bringing forward a reduction in the water shortage emergency. We're currently at a stage four and to be in alignment with the state and the governor's executive order, you know, look at, considering a stage three, which would, which would put us in alignment with the state requirement. So, you know, message is really, you know, for our residents, continue to conserve, be mindful of the drought, continue to, we'll continue to monitor precipitation and see where we stand and it seems like, you know, we are in improving conditions, albeit cautiously. And it's a good reminder for folks, if they haven't done so already, to turn off their irrigation for the year. It's really a good time that we don't need to rely, for the most part, vegetation on, on further irrigation until we, till next year.
Any more of that? Future agenda item at our next meeting or?
Yeah, we're going to strategize with our City Attorney's Office on bringing that forward and that reduction. I think the major impact will be a reduction in the surcharge for our customers and, you know, which we normally see at this time of year is a pretty significant reduction in water usage anyways because this irrigation is turned off. Be able to still be well below the state requirements in terms of meeting our, our reduction goals, but also just provide some relief to our customers.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
On COVID-19?
No updates, Mayor.
Should we talk about AB 361s going away beginning of the year? Since that is a COVID emergency?
It's going, I believe it's in February, beginning of the year. So I think that the emergency is being lifted or by the governor. I thought it was, can't remember the exact date, but in February. So therefore, AB 361 will no longer be in place. There's a new legislation that we are going to be providing updates to the council on as far as how you can use it. It's very, very limited as to not posting an agenda and opening it up to the public where you're participating, for example, if you're at a conference or if you're on vacation. Often, the way, the way it was done before, right, you put post it on the agenda. That's still available, but you're absolutely right, AB 361, after the emergency is lifted, going to be going away from that.
Sir?
Just a couple of things, Mr. Mayor. I'm sorry, I should have reported out under Council Reports. I just wanted to give a big thank you to Craig. He took down the Hometown Heroes posters along with Bob Cox. They're now being displayed in the Veterans Hall for the winter months. And David, you should know that he just does that on his own. I mean, we, I really want to make sure he gets a big thank you for everything he does when it comes to the vets. Also, the Hillsburg Band will be playing Friday night, 7 o'clock, right here at the Vets Building for Veterans Day. Sons of the Legion are doing an SOS breakfast.
Does that stand for Gus?
It has something to do with something on a shingle.
Yeah.
But it's going to be at the Veterans Hall, 8 o'clock in the morning. At 12 noon, there's going to be a barbecue for the veterans put on at the Latter Day Saints Church. So it'll be a big Veterans Day. I'm sure city staff is welcome to come. I'll arrange it if you want to come. Just let me know and I'll, I'll make sure they know, so.
Isn't there a Veterans Day breakfast at Villa Shana Clear in Hillsburg as well? Do you have the info on that?
I don't.
I saw it in passing.
Cloverdale branch.
Okay.
Council Directional Future Agenda Items?
Yeah, I have a couple of things. I think we already covered the, the dog catcher position that could probably be modified. I had correspondence from a resident that we all know and love who has sent regular correspondence with concerns about the increase in water rates. And I felt it was time for me to respond and just tell him for my decision and my perspective. I got a really nice note back saying, and I kind of sent it with a comment saying, you know what, agree, don't disagree, or agree, disagree. It's, it's up to you. But this is, you know, this was my position on what we did and what the history was. And he sent back a really nice note that said, thanks so much for kind of just letting me know what your perspective is. Sometimes just the progress in meetings is hard to follow. And so this is just what I hope is constructive feedback to, to staff. I remember, you know, probably several years ago at this point and maybe more on the Planning Commission's side, I don't remember if it was my earlier days on council, but a lot of times when there was a really complicated issue that was like a series of lots of public meetings, lots of public input, maybe it was sent to the Planning Commission, it came back to council and they sent it back to Planning Commission, the council, and then it went to Subcommittee. There used to be a bulleted list of where we were and how we got here. And I know that that is a, I know staff puts that in the staff reports now. They put a, you know, in, in 2004, we did this. In 2018, we did this. But I think that when it's in prose form, I mean, I'm talking, I'm like working with people in their 60s. They have the attention spans of three or 13-year-olds at this point because everybody's so used. point, because everybody's so used to just bullets and social media. I think that a lot of people have really lost that ability to read prose, especially when they are like, they're reading a packet or concerned about an issue, and they want to go to a meeting and make a comment. And so, we hear a lot about, oh, well, the process wasn't transparent, or this wasn't in public meetings, and the fact is, it was just like, well, you know what, I lost like 20, 20 hours of my life in public meetings, getting this to where it is, and you're saying that, you know, that that didn't happen? Those are 20 hours I'm never going to get back. So, I think that it would be helpful for staff and for council members when we're talking to folks, that at the top of, I don't know, not every staff report, but especially, but especially the kind of ones that are part of a process, that we have a bulleted list of the timelines that give what dates, what happened, what decisions were made. And, and I think that would be really helpful also when we're giving updates to the public about stuff in our, in our newsletter, which is really valuable, but I've also heard the criticism that, oh, well, it's not, you know, it's not, it's not this, or it's not enough information, it doesn't show. But if we really, I think the lesson here is that we kind of need to show our work. And I think that can just, could avoid a lot of difficulty with, with members of the public who are catching up on stuff, on things that honestly, you know, housing element, traffic element, they take months, and we don't, we take for granted the, the process and how long it's taken, and how much participation there's been, but it's hard for people who are like jumping in and, and want to contribute. So, let's make it easier, let's CYA in the spirit of SOS, and that's just, that, that's my feedback on, on that. And I think that it was, I think it was nice to have a nice conversation on email with somebody, and I, I think that that would, would help us to have better communication with our, with our constituents. The other thing I was going to add is that I'm very happy to see many of the water restrictions being able to be rolled back, but as part of my, as part of my council report, I put in the link to Daily Acts and their resources on water catchment. And here's the irony, is that while we're fortunately, hopefully, knock on fake wood, going to be getting some relief on this drought, now is actually the time to start putting water catchment systems in, because this is when you start saving water for next summer. So, I, I put the link into the Daily Acts page on the, the resources. They have really good webinars, really good links to YouTube videos on how people can do water catchment themselves, and also, you know, talk to contractors who can help them if, you know, water is a dark science or a mystery, like it is to, to, to most of us. So, that might be good content for our, for our newsletter to get out to our water users. Now's the time to, you know, start talking to your, well, actually, last month was, but it's never too late, but now's the time to start, consider putting in some of those blue barrels and collecting water for next year.
Councilmember Cruz?
Yes, it's regarding the newsletter. When I voted to have, not the newsletter, the Cloverdale Connect agreement, I remember voting because there was going to be some attention to the Spanish reading speakers and readers, and to this day, I haven't seen anything in Spanish, so I was wondering if you guys are going to rediscuss this, and, excuse me, if you have to renegotiate the agreement based on what was originally told.
Anything else?
Next meeting is scheduled for December 14th. Do you want to?
Mayor, just in, in response to Councilmember Cruz, I just wanted to note that our, the articles for September and October in the Cloverdale Connect were both translated into Spanish, and there were dual articles that were provided. We, we will be bringing back a discussion in early 2023, providing an overview of all the, all the discussion topics that were covered over the preceding year, seeking council input on any future topics that council would like us to see, and kind of just really, one is a, how are we doing a check-in? And, and I think that will be a good, a good opportunity to provide feedback on the, on the bilingual component. We just want to mention that the staff has been working with Dana on, on how best to ensure that we're being equitable with our article space. Some of the topics have been fairly robust with, in terms of material, and so it, it's been difficult to get that down into a space without buying additional ad space, so that we create that, that we have all that material and bilingual availability. So, we're, we're trying to work through that, and with Cloverdale Connect and providing opportunities to ensure that we are being equitable, providing, you know, inserts, or whether it's, it gets provided in Spanish on, on the website. So, but we're trying to figure that out, and so it, it's not a topic that's lost on us, and we recognize it is important. It, it's just being where it's located in the publication itself, how do we best meet that objective? So, it, it's something, it's a work in progress, but I, I think we did do two important articles that we, we translated, and I'm happy to provide those to Councilmember Cruz.
Yeah, I have that, but still, you know, like, the homeless, homelessness this month, that is essential for everybody to know, the, the achievements of the city, and then the work that has taken place, and somehow we need to let everybody know the good things that are happening in town, and the good job that staff is also doing. Thank you.
Meeting adjourned at 8:34.